Bring this meeting of the West Branch Planning and zoning commission to order. And good to see a few people here in the audience. And we will begin by a roll call.
John four.
Here.
Ryan Bowers.
Here.
The Walsh. Sally back. Brad Bauer.
I'm here.
Jim Hoffman.
Yeah.
Adam Gopel.
Yeah.
Terry Gordon.
Yeah.
Leslie.
No. It's hard to get gender equity around here. Oh, my. Okay, well, we have a proposed agenda before us. I'll accept any changes to that agenda or any additions anyone has. If not, I guess, okay, go to it.
Whether we want to discuss it this meeting or not, but I'd like to get a better understanding of the future plan for the Main Street extension that goes from or the expansion that I understand is coming, that's going to be turned into a three lane. I haven't seen a conceptual plan to that, but it's my understanding that that's having a pretty influential. That has a pretty big influence on some development across from high school. So I think that should be something that we discuss.
Okay, I'll call that four C and we can see if we have enough information to to talk about it or not. Okay, the first of the items on the agenda, well, I haven't got an approval yet, so.
I'll prove the amended agenda.
Okay. All those in favor?
I.
As opposed, okay. Item four A is to look at the site plan for the Parkside Hills second addition. So I'm eager to find out how things are going. I'm sure.
You have it for that?
No, unless I warm up my computer. I did look at it and I assume others did too.
It's safe. Usually they have the documents, so.
I know. But frankly, I didn't see any special changes. Yeah, right.
Yeah, I know from, I think we saw primarily. We added the bike rack.
Good.
So that was kind of suggesting. Yep, yep. So that's in there up next to the building, so.
I saw one of the buildings was named Restaurant. That's the meaning will be necessarily, but.
Parking lot is section eight, seven.
I may have a question for you, I guess. So I know we've seen this a few times and I'm trying to remember because this is a PUD, is there anything you guys used, I guess, like this is sort of looks like commercial development is there anything that would be abnormal to this site compared to regular commercial? Look to me like it would fit in a like a CB one district two.
Yeah, no, it's something that we actually were using this design over in Corville. It's not quite as big as this building. It's a little smaller as well. In four thousand, five thousand square foot smaller, but very similar in design, very similar in the look of the exterior and everything. So yeah, and that's in commercial zoning. So yeah, it basically is, you know.
Offsets and like the parking requirements are all the same as commercial.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I think that we just have a few lots with the expansion. We can add expansion to, like I said, that discussion that we had before with Adam had talked about making the there a little less. But depending on if we, depending on the ratio of retail to restaurant, we have the ability to add, I think, an additional twenty four spaces, I believe, twenty five spaces to the end of that. That's why that that parking area is designed that way. So.
Well, the idea of a PUD was to allow some discussion and discretion. So.
Works out good.
Okay.
And I think I mentioned it at the previous meeting too, but you guys for the sidewalks part of the street project out there are not shown on this plan tonight.
Yeah, there'll be sidewalks along the street, yeah, of course. Yeah, they'll run right down behind the curb like yeah, all the way down travels all the way from the gas station all the way down to through all of that, through all of that commercial on both those lines.
So. I think we have a not related to your project, but the city may have some need for pedestrian traffic towards this once you have it all built out and a lot of not a lot of sidewalk connectivity to your area.
Yeah, which has been a long discussion. I know that we have, I know there's been something mentioned already about the area up coming up the hill toward the gas station along the street and trying to figure out a way to get there's been mentioned already to the national, what's I'm trying to yeah, the park services and how that is going to be addressed so that, you know, because right now we're kind of running into a dead end. So.
Well, we'd rather hope it doesn't stay that way because.
Yeah, we, I don't want it to either. I'd like to see that get done, but again, it's our park services and federal stuff, so it's going to take a little longer than normal. Without having curtain gutter and having a ditch coming down into town, that'll be the discussion that has to be had, I'm sure, in the future, so.
Now, are there any questions?
I had one comment just about the hydrant located on the toward Chestnut Drive. Was this product to the fire chief is just just as far as being able to reach reach the property?
We've had no comments on that at all.
Haven't? Okay, no, okay. I just thought it was when the one hydrant there is just on Chestnut and there's really nothing close to that building.
I think there's one on Elm as well.
Yeah, is there?
A little symbol that's like.
Maybe I'm missing it.
It's probably just.
I guess there's one up close to the gas stations right next to that, too, that we're sure.
They're probably just adding the two along the private drive in this project is what we're seeing as new ones and then there's existing ones.
Oh, and then there's existing elsewhere. That'll be useful. Okay, well, that makes sense.
Yeah, there's one right up there by that. Yeah, that's already.
Very timely question.
Huh?
Yes. Those recent fire.
Oh, yeah, yeah, just.
Okay, no more questions or thoughts? Thanks for sharing and we will move to consider approval of the site plan for one of Parkside Hills. Is there a motion that we do so?
Motion for approval.
Okay, in the second, second, okay, thanks, James. If you call the rule, we'll get approved.
Very. To approve.
Me. Jim second.
Second. Roll call four.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Ben's going to do this. Walsh. Bauer.
Yes.
Often.
Yes. Okay, it has the, it has passed and your site plan can continue ahead. Of moving then to the next item on the agenda, that's to review the revised site plan for Dawson Plaza, progressive rehab.
So you actually looked at this once before and approved a previous site plan, which now this looks a little different. What was originally proposed to you and approved was one larger building that took up three lots there in the Meadows Park four. Excuse me, after getting pricing and looking at this further between the partnership of progressive rehab and KLM was determined that wasn't effective or able to make that project work. So progressive rehab though is still looking at moving forward. And so what we're looking at is progressive rehab building only on lot one, the part four there. So on that corner lot of Main Street and Dawson Drive. So what originally was before progressive rehab, a fitness center, two additional commercial bays is now just the progressive rehab. That progressive rehab itself has grown from what was fifteen hundred square feet to just over twenty two hundred square feet now. Excuse me, that has its own drive and parking lot, parking stalls associated with it. Yeah, happy to answer any questions and take a look at this.
I'm glad to see that it's maybe fewer parking spaces than originally thought. And seems to me that this was this this building now has a capacity, what, nine people?
Yeah, yeah, and I don't know what their total staffing looks looks like for that. Scott Toma was unable to be here tonight. He's got kids playing some baseball softball games, but yeah, I know this was like I said, a little bigger, which was they were happy to do than previously with the bay that we had in the joint building before. So he wanted to make sure to grow that a little more similar, I think, in nature of a couple of their facilities over in Tipton and North Liberty.
Are there any thoughts of the use of the other two lots or how much is left?
Yeah, I know, I mean, Brad's here, KLM, but I know we're leaving those available open to whether it becomes residential or standard, so commercial. Thoughts on that, Brad?
If they are, are one is.
There is R V one.
Well, I know yours is, but.
All those are, all three of those lots are.
Yeah, that's, that's true. Okay, well, comments, questions, thoughts?
I have one then, please. The, I know we brought up on the previous version as well, has there been any discussion about the sidewalk along Main Street again on this lot? Is there a future allowance or something?
Yeah, I think previously, if I remember correctly, that was the where that was left was.
It's not a current urban.
Was escrow for that? Yeah, that's how I know that was left last time. I assume that's the same going forward here.
And there's been some recent issues with sidewalks along Main Street, so. Look at them.
That was all because there's no connection for that sidewalk now and yep, correct. And then changing that, yeah, what is currently that rural cross section. Yeah, I believe that that's still the same intent as. Yeah. Correct, yeah. That's typically how that's handled. Yeah, usually we just take that quantity, get that today. Assess it based on, like you said, the current or pricing.
We need it when the price goes up. When it gets put in. So you need to. Yeah, price.
Do you have any comments about the use of the building? I know it, you said it's progressive rehab, are they still intending to use that open space as like gym function or is it just?
No, it's all just progress rehab, yeah. Fitness, our rehabilitation and physical therapy.
I think they really want some space for Jim.
Oh, yeah.
All right, what about any?
Yeah, no, and it should be, we had previously in the sidewalk or at the end on the bigger building and now you said it's very good points. No, I don't either on here. So yes, we will get that added.
Saying in terms of if council wants to go more towards sidewalks required now, we just need to get direction so we can stop it before like these meetings, so maybe something we should discuss. Well, wouldn't stop, we just wouldn't give them a heads up for these meetings, that's how we're changing. We just, Dave and I would need to be upfront with developers as they're going through the site plan process.
Like another checkbox or something.
Yep, yep. So if that's the direction council wants to go in going forward. Speaking on behalf of the residents, which is new, newer, I've had quite a few of the Dawson Drive residents privately wishing to fund there's some drainage that happens behind their backyard. They understand it's their responsibility. But they are kind of fanning together in terms of having their own tiling system. I've asked Dave about this. Said as long as they tie in through something, it should work capacity wise. But they, I may give those contact information to you Brad, just because it may or may not benefit you to work with them. But basically what would happen is if they it would be smoother if everyone along there agrees and there's an additional tiling system. But that's going to be privately funded. So you're more within your right to say, no, we don't want to do that. If, say, you don't want to down at the, which lot? Almost all on the east side.
Yeah, north of these three lots. On that.
Yes, basically where my parents' house starts to the the sandwich.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. So they may want to do a partnership where they tie in together.
They could do a store somewhere.
Yes. Yes. So. I'll have to give you guys that content, that's just newer stuff, so I wouldn't bring it up in a meeting, but.
Cross it.
It would go across.
It could turn.
Yeah.
So, yeah, right.
You're within your right to say no, I just.
But one is the only lot where things were not cut so steeply that you won't have those drainage problems. But beyond that, definitely. I was amazed to see the cliff that exists. Where there was once a fairly level lot. Anyway. Okay. Adam, if they, they counsel.
I'll be just got a real quick question. I'm talking about going and seeing that fire theme tonight. Is there fire truck access you guys into the lot?
Yeah, we're covered within distance wise of the building and due to the size of the building of where we're at, we went through that with Dave. There's a hydrant to just to your be the southwest of that parking lot. I think it's noted by a keynote A on the site utility plan that's showing the existing fire hydrant there.
Okay, I was going to raise one of their matter that just was brought up, that is if the council is going to change in sidewalk policy in some regard. We really need to know so that when we're looking at site plans and so forth, we are doing things appropriately. Okay. Any more questions? I, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this revised site plan for the Dawson Plaza project.
Motion second.
I'll have you call the rule again. Running with Brad.
Sorry. And Ryan, second to that.
Yeah.
All right, Brad.
Yes.
Brian, yep. John?
Yes.
Dan's going to, yes. Hoffman?
Yes. Okay, very good. One hopes that's the last of that one's revisions. Now, let's take a moment to spend time on what Matt raised, which is the question of changing the configuration of Main Street and making it perhaps a three lane facility. I don't think this has come up before us before, but it undoubtedly has some conversations in the city. So I don't know, Adam, if you'd like to share what was any thoughts or.
I guess I, I guess I'm referring to what you guys want to know at this point. There's no specific designs. There's no specific developer that's building there at this point to even bring anything forward. I do know I asked Dave with the roundabout to try and have a transition if a three lane were to ever happen, but we don't have any plans from a developer to say we're even setting aside right away. I've got to see the plan before then, and I haven't seen a plan from anyone.
Council has said that if the developer, the fourteen acres across from that that developer wants to come out to the Main Street, another street. I think council would like to see a terminal.
But that's if someone connects, so I don't have a plan indicating if somebody is or isn't.
As it is now, it's just the high school and Dawson Drive.
Right.
John, if you might.
I ran that battle with the school about the turn lane year ago or more.
I was thinking it was when the Meadows and the school were both happening. We had discussions about a concept for a city owned.
Yeah, the Meadows came first and they
the city owned.
Meadow, Dawson got built first and before the high school, the second high school, before the high school even was planned.
They're planning to change.
Dawson Drive got put in.
It certainly did seem to change.
The second driveway of the high school changed everything. But the attitude at the time was let's just wait and see if there's a problem. Or we need, you need a turn.
Well, it seems like there's a consensus, there is a problem there now at the middle school. And I don't know if the council has a five year comprehensive or capital improvements plan put together yet, but something should probably be on there for the at least that intersection, not the you have the roundabout as a.
I would push back on you on that one and say we do have a CIP plan and it's not been finalized yet. But based on what we're getting with cost from roundabout plus east side doing east side reconstruction of mains. I found a way to with the help of of some grant writing to fund Woxie Creek widening internally. But between funding those two options, we're talking a hefty tax raise that I think council is willing to support, but that won't even finish those projects. So if you add this turn lane on top of it, by tax price, I'm talking probably around a hundred dollars a year on a home that's two hundred thousand. So if your house is more than that, it's going to go up even more than that. And I would say I think council has probably learned, they probably should have required something in the past. But it is hard for them to go backwards after something's been put in. I don't think you will find a council member that said maybe we should have addressed it differently. The fact is those decisions were made. I think you're talking, you know, I've talked a little bit with our attorney in terms of street connection fees based on state laws are pretty much not allowed anymore. There's still water connection fees. It would be nice in the future if we're doing well on building permit fees to set aside extra funds for new growth. That's not going to probably pay for the real cost of new growth, but it could help subsidize some of it. I think yes, I think there are some errors that were made. And I don't think that we can go backwards on, and I think to speak on behalf of the council. They're getting money from the state for Woxie Creek widening, we're going to take advantage of it while we can. Same with the county paying for a good chunk of roundabout. We're going to take advantage of it while we can. And then I there's an equity component on the east side is starting to deteriorate, so it does need some public investment. So I think that would be their three, three stances. I don't know if you got anything else to add on that.
We don't have a widen in the, yeah, we don't have a plan for it right now, widen road in front of the high.
It's possible we could do twenty seven, twenty eight, but Cedar Johnson is probably a higher priority of this current council.
Cedar Johnson would be a higher priority. Make that real safer.
And if we don't even get all of east side done, that very well could spur a different conversation in terms of what takes priority in twenty seven, twenty.
Small town funding issues.
Nothing new.
Yeah, so I know it's congested, say from eight to eight thirty, it's congested in front of the tax courts, also congested downtown, I mean.
Would there be another solution?
Stop sign, stop sign.
Yeah.
And it has for years. So I don't know, it's just something we got to put up with for a while.
I wonder if maybe there's like a, the school could provide a a crossing guard or something they
They do.
They put somebody down there to stop traffic coming in to let the left turners unload. Because that could be an easy solution. You're talking about somebody working three hours a day with a stop sign in their hand.
They have a crossing yard at Dawson.
Yeah, but when you're, when you're, when you come to the other cross streets, people can't get out of the street because of the school traffic. What, what do you say? Does that?
The left turners trying to get into the school are blocking all the traffic. And if that crossing guard can just block or maybe they have another one that blocks traffic coming down the hill.
I avoid it intentionally, maybe I'll drive by and
another solution would be a fold up stop sign.
Right, a lot of times use that.
That would be a spread thing a lot. I waste that up here. Yeah, the fold down stop sign is a problem.
People avoid, or they didn't pay attention to it.
No, it's more of a bus drivers didn't want to have to do it.
Part of it's that or part of it, yeah, you're one that always does it, it's gone on vacation, then they, you know, they forget.
Or you people run it because they don't you run it for all day long and then after you're blocked, you got stop sign. I think that was kind of an issue here on all of Main Street. At any point in the future, we'll decide to need a stop sign there. As that grows. Council said, no, we don't want a stop sign. But yeah, I mean, that might be a solution, four way stop.
If that doesn't make it from the stop. I guess we want to double check and make sure that is the best option. Maybe that's the best option for the time being, but.
Did you buy it for five years?
Well, frankly, the, the idea of having a person direct traffic there when it's only about three hours a day at most would be most cost effective, I'm quite sure. I've seen that operate in other cities quite well. And partly because, you know, you have school kids involved and so people pay more attention to someone who's directing traffic in those circumstances, but it's very cost effective. I guess you have to wait until the irritation builds up enough. And clearly that should be the responsibility of the school district, not of, not of the city.
Well, it should be a shared responsibility.
Who caused it?
Streets or city streets, I mean.
There's all that traffic that's blocking it going to.
Well, when the Hoover Highway opens, they're all going down the city. I mean, it's not a work. A lot of that traffic's.
We begin to have the same problem.
Yeah.
It's difficult around these.
Yeah, it's a short period of time. It's all about reception, right? A little bit delay. It's not.
At least they have, it's not like they're breaking things up a little bit. Yeah, and so it puts rollout stop signs and plus everybody has a couple of rollout stop signs.
Well, something.
Okay, well, I think we move on and.
One more thing about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Three way expansion. So is there going to be anything done or planned for that roundabout that would then prohibit or enable a three way lane expansion if that does come to be the case?
It would be amenable to a three lane.
It would be.
Configuration.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So I just wanted to make sure.
Right, but I think has to be watched carefully as to whether the Meadows development, whatever it does find and take place has access to Main Street or access to Cedar Johnson Road. I think that's going to make a real difference in terms of what configuration you have for.
Let's just say that Cedar Johnson. How do we configure sidewalks down Main Street? And it doesn't come out on Main Street. Sidewalk, yeah, because we're talking about the three lane and, and the issues, it's the elevation change there and ditch and, and the other part of it is the floor plan on the south side of the road. So there is some floor plan on the south side, so there's been a discussion as to how we do a third lane and where it goes, who's going to take it to it. And then how we get a sidewalk in there. So. That's up there.
There's definitely easy to put a trail, ten foot wide trail on the south side.
School property?
School, well, beyond city, right?
Okay, in the right.
Right away, ten foot wide sidewalk. So people can cross the street at the roundabout. So people can cross the street at the roundabout. And get to that ten foot sidewalk.
So then you gain the sidewalk on the north side. Potentially, yes, I'm a little bit against that, but that's potentially, yes, so. I mean, kind of, it's a decision that has to be made real quickly. That's why. Trying to.
Yeah.
I'd like to just interject to you that it seems like. The standard has been in the past that sidewalks are required in urban areas where there's curb and gutter, and that's where we've, as a commission. Asked for and enforced sidewalks. Sounds like council is asking for sidewalks in a rural section. Which may be challenging to deliver because of the shape of a rural section. Not sure if. That's just an understanding issue, like if they need the city engineer to explain how this. Is supposed to work.
It's not that hard except for probably a couple hundred yard section with really steep hill inside.
Well, it just, it goes down to the project they're working on too, is, is that sidewalk isn't going to connect down there. And it's a sidewalk to nowhere, is it? Better just do larger path on the south side, bring people across Dawson over onto that path. And then make people across up at the bottom of the wall, or come back across there. And then have a connection and just avoid that connection from the bottom of the wall.
Which was brought up. It's your fault, Roger.
Well, the south side is connected with the trail that goes into town, and that's a very well used one, so. Something custom.
That argument a few months ago.
This is the under the assumption, this is under the assumption that no exit comes off of the Meadows.
Except at the roundabout.
Except.
See, that developer didn't even want to put that side. He didn't want to do that. The north side of. Cedar Johnson. Main Street. That's what I was on.
Yeah, so it's just, it's a change in connection. So.
Okay, well, I'm sure this topic is going to come up again from time to time. In terms of item number five, old business draft design standard guidelines.
So I'm behind on this, and I'm probably going to push it until July to have these meetings. Behind with A, making sure CIP gets done effectively. Two evaluations are underway and that tends to be busy in your time. And then you still need to finalize what our tip policy is before, or if we're going to have one before I dive in more stuff. So that's just me, I kind of got the cart a little bit too far ahead, but just know July I'll want to start meeting with the guys, but.
Well, just look like, how would design standards be, would they become a code? Section code.
Yep. Don't worry, we'll have you there to argue all the points.
Okay. Well, let's move to item B then. And item B, sign requirements for PUDs.
Yeah, um. Yes, signs for, or sign requirements for PUD. It was my impression from the last meeting that planning the zoning wanted to. Wanted to see all signs that come through the planning of the zone, so I thought it might be smart to put something in the sign ordinance section of the code. Sort of following the same suit as everything else. Just add a section, permitted signs, plan unit development. Put a little paragraph in there. And this is what I proposed, says all proposed signs located in a plan unit development shall be presented to planning and zoning board for approval at a regular business meeting. Planning and zoning board shall review the proposed signage for usage and provide flexibility and aesthetically pleasing visual appearance. Signs shall be compatible with surrounding properties and implement the goals of the C comprehensive.
I'm just throwing that out there.
Actually, it sounds rather good.
No, thanks. I did write that.
Yes, but I didn't know really.
You know, the, the point of flexibility is important.
Yes.
Aesthetically reasonable anyway, compatible with the surrounding areas. All those aspects sound quite reasonable as far as I'm concerned. Of those comments.
Isn't it kind of vague?
Yeah.
Designer, side designer. Can't even put forth a. Definitely put forth an idea and bring it to you guys.
Yeah, that's exactly what happens in the historic preservation district.
Wouldn't it be helpful to have some actual guidelines to start with, like what's in the ACI district? ACI district? Which is canopy signs or side of a building. Those square footage. I think restrictions, wouldn't that be helpful just as a starting point?
We have those. I might suggest that maybe the only thing to add or. Contribute somehow would be try and. Model the sign requirements in PUD after the type of building, what zoning that building would fit in, you know, like if it's a commercial building, it should be commercial sign guidelines to follow.
Yeah, fifty percent of the square foot building or something like that.
So you don't want to, you don't want an industrial sign on a commercial building.
I think that you might get into some problems with that depending on what type of design they have in this PUD. I mean, if you're looking at commercial on the main floor. And residential on the second floor. Are you going to allow them to put sign up on the second floor? And these are, how big can that sign be? Can it be illuminated? You know, can it be flashing? You know, flashing is a, the tenex. I mean, there's so many things to look at when it comes to something.
And we don't have that many PUDs, and I, I think that just having a chance to look at what would be proposed, see if the members of the commission think that's suitable for the area.
Make sure you guys need something to go by though.
I do, well, I think, I think when it says the late turnover of members here might have a whole different opinion twenty years from now.
There's still going to be community representatives.
Flashing sign, you guys hopefully would not allow flashing, so. You know, the, you know, the, the last sentence, the signs shall be compatible. With surrounding property, so if that business is on the main. The, you know, main drag or main street there, you could go ahead and look at, locate. You know, whatever zone that is, they're allowing, you know, marquees or they're allowing, you know, Jason signs of fifteen percent, then you could go off of that.
Do a general reference to what's in the ACI business, sign ordinance. In terms of size and location. Just as a general guideline for a sign design to start with and for you guys to follow.
But if we go ahead and put fifteen percent. It's fifteen percent. We can't say, no, you can't do fifteen percent because that looks too big to us. You see what I'm saying? We're, we're going to say you can only have a two square foot sign.
I think it's especially important when you're abutting in the residential district.
That's when you get into these. Where you can have so many different types of mixed uses that the, that the PUD allows. It's. I'd hate to, to go ahead and put a minimum down on there that is. Too large.
Terry, can I ask, do you have any experience in your other communities where there might be a PUD and there's some sign requirements you've had experience with, like if I have a city hasn't.
Cities. Whole different.
We're not trying to be out of city.
Yeah, I know, I mean, but they're, they're have, you know, they got the peninsula up there. They have a specific sign ordinance for the peninsula, because that's large, you know, that's their own neighborhood. Now they got this south of Burlington, they've got this whole green big area that's. Riverfront crossings, and now they're opening up another one, south farther and.
South side.
Yeah, south side near, it's everything's all design review where you can. Building, that's a design review and it's, you know, it's. Everyone's different. I mean, it all depends on the type of uses that are allowed in the zone. Where with, with our PUD, I have to read through it, I mean, there's. Lots of lot everything. And you can mock up these days, it's a lot easier in, in Revit and some of those other programs to mock up the sign. I mean, we just did it for somebody that. And it takes, you know, half an hour, an hour, and you can put the size of the sign on the building within a percentage of half, you know, and then just give it a. And because you're not nationals that want to come in, and you don't want to negate a national coming in the sign, they want to put it up right off the bat. You know, that's, that gets to be a struggle at all, it's, I mean, you say, oh, we can only be this big, what happens if it's literally a half a square foot too big? It's a, now you're having to go in and wave something or change something or get a variance from your code. If you set that certain size, then it could literally be a square foot bigger than what the guidelines are, but looks good on.
So, I think, I mean, I think I understand Roger's point of that, you know, you have to give the developer, you know, the sign creator some sort of guideline or something to work with. But I think we ultimately need to go, the final say in the matter. So I, I don't know if there's a way to say that, you know. Refer to such and such as a design reference, but final design. Is upon, you know.
Yeah.
Our review.
Like neighboring zoning districts would be a starting point for making, you're talking about Chad's PUD. They can follow HCI since that's most of what's out there as a guideline and then it probably won't fit some of the buildings that are in there, but at least it's placed in.
There's a certain amount of vagueness, it's okay.
And on the coal site, your residential area, which might be a whole river. All game, so you.
The future site is across from the high school, we want to certainly kind of impact that too. Display a pass. It's coming across the high school. To somewhat. If it becomes a PUD, that's another place that could potentially. I don't think we want some of the flashing as you're talking about.
Good discussion. Terry, if you wanted to write up what you had there and.
Actually glad you showed up.
Yeah, or final form and present it to us next time. We'll have a chance to think about it a little bit more and see if that's what we want to have. Okay, next is comments from the chair, commission members. And city staff.
I'll make note, I will be on vacation in June, I think Leslie will be out too, so for developers, engineers, you need to have something done in June. Let's know as soon as possible. It may be. More informal, I guess, we'll see who can step up in terms of, a lot of us aren't here, but guess, yeah. Roger.
It's always Roger. It's always Roger.
So just know we, if something actually has to, has to happen in June, just. Yeah, we know it's impossible.
Okay, Roger, you have any comments?
All site just keeps moving closer to reality.
That's good to hear. Okay, if there's nothing else, call motion for adjournment. Second.
Second.
Okay, all of us in favor, aye.
Aye.
And July twenty six.